Welcome to the March tenth, twenty twenty first special meeting. Twenty twenty three, yeah, that's March, March tenth, twenty twenty one. I don't know why it sounds funny when I say it that way. March tenth, twenty twenty one, uh, Troy City Council joint meeting with the Global Troy Advisory Committee. I will officially call the meeting to order and I will ask for the roll call from City Clerk Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brooks?
Here.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Here.
Councilmember Eric Singal?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Hodrick?
Here.
Ms. Vika Gras, Vika Gradsky?
Here.
Ms. Burris? Mr. Fakori?
Here.
Ms. Howe? Ms. Lou?
Here.
Ms. Mohibeen?
Here.
Ms. Nachaba?
Yes.
Ms. No Guiz Ortiz? Mr. Sekri?
Here.
Arjun Solakapali? And Yudong Shu?
Okay, all city council members present and a majority of the Global Troy Advisory Committee members present. We do know that Mavita Burris will be joining us a little bit late. And we did receive information that a couple of our other Global Troy members would not be able to join us this evening. So we, uh, this is, this is exciting to have this joint meeting with our city council members and our Global Troy. I believe I, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this is our first joint meeting between council and Global Troy. So it's been almost five years that Global Troy has been in existence. So that's, uh, it's exciting when we finally get this opportunity to come together and talk. Um, and looking forward to what City Manager Miller and his team have to present for us. And then the discussion we'll be able to have after. According to our, um, agenda, next up on the agenda, the first up on the agenda is public comment. City Clerk Dixon, was there any public comments submitted for this meeting? But you're muted.
Yes, Mayor, we did have one, um, email.
I will remind everybody, if you could stay muted unless you're speaking, it will make for a much smoother transmission of this meeting. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So, uh, we had an email from, uh, Rasan Trias, um, asking for a document to be read into the record, regarding fair housing. Uh, one moment, please. Trying to do this from my computer and it's just taking a little bit longer to open up.
No problem.
Dear City Council, we respectfully request that the following statement be read during the public comment period during this evening's meeting of the City of Troy City Council. Greetings from the Fair Housing Center of Metropolitan Detroit. For over forty years, the Fair Housing Center has served the citizens and community of Troy in fair housing complaint intake, investigation, testing, and complaints in federal and state court and with HUD and the Michigan Department of Civil Rights. We are also available to answer questions by residents, housing providers, city staff, and others regarding fair housing and general housing related matters. We also have a variety of fair housing brochures informing citizens of their fair housing rights on various topics. All these services are provided free of charge. Each year, the center trains housing providers, management companies, real estate agents, and brokers, private municipal and legal service, uh, service attorneys, municipalities, tenants, and homeowners. We also engage in a variety of education and outreach activities and place fair housing advertisements in electric, electronic and print publications and on social media. Please visit our website at www.fairhousingdetroit.org for additional information. We look forward to continuing to serve citizens of the city of Troy to ensure that the municipality remains a vibrant, inclusive community for all. Sincerely, Steve Tomcoiak, the staff and board of directors of the Fair Housing Center of Metro Detroit. And that is all of the public comment for this evening.
Thank you very much. And so as a reminder, as long as we're meeting virtually, public comment can be submitted for our meetings by emailing publiccomment@troymi.gov or by calling or leaving a voicemail, two four eight, five two four, three three zero two. Um, and again, they're limited to three minutes as they would be in a, uh, in-person meeting. Uh, I just want to give a quick thanks to the Fair Housing Center of Metro Detroit for their work in our community. And thank you for the opportunity to have that, uh, letter read into the record this evening, um, so we could hear about the good work we're doing. Appreciate it very much. Uh, we see that, I see that Tom has joined us from the Global Troy Advisory Committee. So welcome, Tom. And I, I also should say that I tend to call the Global Troy members by their first names and the council members by their last names. So there's, it could be a, you could get a mix of something very interesting tonight, just as a, just as a fair warning. So, all right, next up on the agenda is our, our regular business as stated in the, the agenda in the special meeting notice. We've got one item tonight, Troy City Council and Global Troy Advisory Committee Joint Study Session. Uh, again, looking forward to presentation from city management and then an opportunity for us as a good conversation. I'm sure there'll be some, or I know that there's some specific areas that we need to discuss, uh, which will be driven a little bit by what, uh, is presented to us. Because there are so many of us, I'm going to ask that we keep things very orderly and please signal me, uh, if you'd like to speak. It's easier than having potentially a good handful of people call out at the same time. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Miller to go ahead and start with the presentation. Go ahead, Mark. Hey, Mark, I'm sorry to do this. Can I ask you just to hold on for one second? For some reason, I'm having technical difficulties where I can't hear anything. So I, I'm assuming everybody else can hear you because it looks like nobody else is out. Nobody else can hear you? Oh, oh, good. All right. Mark, we can't hear you. I thought it was me this whole time and I was mortified, but I'm glad to know it's Mark.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, and members of the Global Troy Advisory Committee. Good evening, and I'm happy to say that the sun has gone across the street. It's like a beautiful shade. All right, so, um, next slide.
Sounds like it recorded you for a little bit, Mark, and then played it all out at once for us.
Can you hear now?
It depends when you said that. Could have been fifteen seconds ago.
I, I've noticed that I'm hearing things choppy. Can you hear me now? Um, can you hear me now? So I'm not sure what's happening. Can, I think we could, can we just turn this over to, to Sarah start out in the first couple slides?
That sounds like a great idea. Go ahead, Sarah. But by the way, I, I guess I should say before we even get started here, city council members, Global Troy, you know Sarah very well. We get to see her every time we've met, um, since she's been on staff. But for city council, I think this is some, for the first time, some of you actually seen her smiling face. So welcome to the assistant to the city manager. It works very hard to provide us on council. Great information and regular communication coming from the city manager's office, but we haven't had any opportunity to be in person with you or have seen your face in a meeting. So welcome, Sarah, and, uh, go ahead. I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, it's really great to be here and I'm really excited to finally meet you all. Um, I watch council meetings, you know, every Monday or every other Monday, but, uh, you know, have not got the pleasure of meeting you all in person. So this is great. Um, if we can go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So this is just a bit of an overview of what we're going to be discussing today. Um, we're going to start with introductions. As the mayor said, um, you know, maybe some of us don't know each other or have not got to really interact with each other. So we thought that would be a good idea to kind of, um, explain like our backgrounds and, um, for Global Troy members, you know, give a brief overview of, um, you know, their background and their interest in, in Global Troy. Um, and then we're just going to talk a bit about, you know, the programs, welcoming America, um, our relationship with Gov HR, and then have a discussion and, uh, discuss our next steps. Next slide, please. Great. So, um, I believe this is where Mark wanted everyone to kind of go through and, um, introduce themselves. So Mayor, if you'd like to start?
Sure. Well, I'm Mayor Ethan Baker. I feel kind of silly. You guys, I'm, I chair both boards, right? So Global Troy knows me pretty well at this point. Council certainly knows me probably too well at this point. So, uh, you know, I'm, I will just say briefly, I, I was very, you know, about being elected mayor and getting to be the chair or getting to be part of Global Troy. I was very excited to get to do that and, um, to learn more about the great people who make up this group. By what council mayor may not know, is some of them have done so much work on behalf of the city that hasn't really been brought to our attention in the past. And they, they really are passionate about a lot of these issues. So I think it's, it's a great group of people. We've appointed a few new ones over the past year, which is also great. And, um, you know, I, I think that the one great, one of the many great things about Global Troy is our ability to showcase the beautiful diversity of our city. And I'm very honored that we do have this committee and have the folks to work with. So that's me in a nutshell. Are we just going to go down, go down this list, Sarah? All right, let's go ahead and go into Mayor Pro Tem Brooks.
Uh, okay. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm Teresa Brooks, Mayor Pro Tem, and I am excited to be here tonight, um, to hear a lot more about Global Troy and all the things that you guys are doing in our beautiful diverse community and how we can work together even better to help, um, kind of promote, uh, diversity, equity, inclusion in our community. And I think that you guys have a valuable role in our city. So I'm, I'm looking forward to this meeting. I'm really excited to be here.
That's great, Teresa. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm Edna Abraham. I've been on council for the past five years. And I am a lifetime resident of Troy, um, as well as being the daughter of immigrants. I have, um, my heritage is Caldean. And when I grew up in Troy, there wasn't as much diversity as there is today. And there were certainly some growing pains, um, back in the day. So I can't tell you how pleased I am that the Glo, Global Troy Advisory Committee exists in all the work that it's done over the past five years. And I'm really excited to be partnering with you now and really welcome your input as we, as a council and as a city, and embrace diversity, equity, and inclusivity.
Thank you, Edna. Uh, Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga, who knows both boards as well.
Thank you. It is such an honor to be here tonight. And as you all know, I had the great pleasure to serve on the first Global Troy. I know there was an earlier version of this committee and I really thank Councilmember, um, for actually introducing me to this, um, and learning about this board to have served on it. As many of you know, my own husband is an immigrant. He's, he just became a U.S. citizen a little over, um, a month and a half ago. I have been very passionate about issues of equity and social inclusion back from my time working on policy, working on social inclusion when I was at the World Bank, having advised policymakers on these issues in context of, of, uh, of grave ethnic and, and other forms of, of civil conflict. Um, so, so excited to talk about this. I know that, um, when we passed our racial equity proclamation and statement this summer, one of those suggestions I put forward, and I, I know there was a long desire for us to meet, is to have this conversation and to hear from all of you how your communities have, have been impacted, um, in various ways, um, as we've been hearing about, um, in the past year, anti-Asian discrimination, um, and of course with the protests surrounding George Floyd's death. So it's a, it's a, it's an honor for us to gather and be able to share and learn from each other.
Thank you, Rebecca. Uh, Councilmember Eric Singal?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm Anne Eric Singal. Uh, I'm very excited to be here. I've enjoyed very much, uh, the, uh, things that I've seen you doing in terms of letting the community know about our diversity, uh, and our various backgrounds. And I'm very much looking forward to seeing what you have coming up. You're doing great work. Thank you so much for what you're doing.
Well, put in, uh, Councilmember Hamilton?
Hi, I'm David Hamilton. I've been on city council the last, a little over the last three years. Uh, like Councilmember Abraham, I grew up here in Troy and been pretty much a lifelong resident. Um, I'm really excited to have this meeting and I know for me as a council member, I want, I want Global Troy Committee to bring ideas and bring to us what you hear from diverse communities and what your needs are and how. And I want to know that me on city council, and I think city councils as a whole wants to empower those ideas. I mean, I've already seen it in the last few, few months. I thought the Black History Month, um, video tributes was a fantastic idea. And I encourage you to get creative, come up with ideas, and I think you'll get a lot of support on this council. And I'm looking forward to everything we're going to achieve together.
Thank you, David. Uh, Councilmember Hodrick?
Hi, um, I feel like I know everyone, um, on some level. It's great to see everyone's faces here tonight. I've been on council almost eight years now and I've lived in Troy for thirty years, um, raised two kids here and loved raising them in such a beautifully diverse community. Um, and enjoyed the diversity in the schools and, um, the conversations that, um, occurred, um, around ideas of inclusion and embracing multiple languages. And, uh, it is such a beautiful strength, um, of this city. Uh, it's, you know, when you think of all the different languages that are being spoken as people take walks around the neighborhoods tonight, it's, it's just an incredible, um, uh, piece of what makes living here, working here, learning here, playing here so wonderful. So this team, um, I know is valuable to have in place and focused and locking arms. Um, and I'm, I'm really glad to be with you tonight and, uh, um, I look forward to working with you, you know, tonight's meeting and in, and in the future. Really appreciate all of you who have stepped up into these roles to volunteer your time. It's, um, it's wonderful to see you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Uh, let's move over to city staff. City Manager Miller is your, do we know if your sound is working better yet? We'll hear you in about fifteen seconds, I bet.
Well, I hope so. Can you hear me?
It's pretty delayed, Mark. Do you want to try, well, I, I think they organized, I was going to say, do you want to try to go out of the meeting?
Okay, well, all right, um.
As long as it doesn't end the meeting for everybody. I just don't, I don't want to do that.
I will do that.
All right. We'll come back to City Manager Miller. How about that? Uh, let's, let's go, um, actually, you know, I'm going to do City Attorney Lori Big Blue. She's not on the list officially, but she's here with us tonight. So let's go there.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the, uh, to the Global Troy Advisory Committee. I am very impressed with the work that you've done so far and I'm looking forward to, uh, the work that you're, uh, going to be doing. Um, I have been a resident of the city for about twenty-three years and raised my kids here, um, as well, and appreciate the diversity that is in the city of Troy.
Thank you, Lori. Assistant City Manager Bob Brunner? Uh-oh. Bob?
Yeah, I'm here.
Well, you are. Okay.
Hi, I'm Bob Brunner. I'm the Assistant City Manager, have been since June of twenty nineteen, which means I've, uh, spent more time working remotely as part of the city management team than I have, um, in person. But, um, I'm responsible for, um, several city departments, uh, like the library, recreation, building inspection, city engineering. And, um, like, uh, Sarah and other folks in the city manager's office also pitch in with a variety of other things and special projects, make sure nothing falls between the cracks. So I'm, uh, here tonight to, uh, tell you a little bit about some of the work we're doing in that, uh, in that arena of other, other duties as assigned and, uh, look forward to working with you all.
Thanks, Bob. Uh, let's go back to you, Sarah.
Perfect. Um, so hi, everyone. I'm Sarah. Um, I've worked with all of you basically. Um, but I am very new to this role and honestly, um, this position, this, uh, working with Global Troy was one of the deciding factors, um, in taking this position. I come from an area that is not very diverse and I was very excited, um, to meet new people, learn, um, gain that like cultural awareness and knowledge, um, that maybe I've missed out in the past. So, um, you know, I'm very excited for this meeting. I'm very excited, um, for these two groups to meet, um, and to see what comes from. And I know it'll be great.
Thank you, Sarah. Sarah, tell us where you're from. Where'd you come from?
Um, so I came from, um, in the middle of nowhere, Missouri, um, of a town about four hundred people.
So she's in the big city now, yeah?
Like, big city.
I, actually, I, I think it's fascinating. Sarah, I applied for this job and interviewed from Missouri and made the choice in the pandemic to, to relocate to Troy. So I think that says something both about Sarah and maybe Troy as well, but I, it's very exciting. It's very cool, Sarah. Glad to see you. Uh, Mark, how about your sound now? Have you figured it out?
Started. Can you hear me?
It's a little less delayed. Try it again.
Okay. Well, why don't you bypass me and I'll see what I can do?
Okay, it's a much shorter delay, so it's getting better, whatever you do. I think, I think. All right. Uh, can we go to the next slide so I can have the, are the Global Troy names on there? So I can do it that way? Or no? Yeah, perfect. All right. So let's go to Lisa Vika Gradsky. We'll start with you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, I've been living in Troy for just over twelve years. And, um, while my children were attending Martell Elementary, I became the PTO, uh, parent that put on the Martell Multicultural Evening, which was wildly successful for many years. Um, I also was involved with the Troy School District Diversity and Inclusion Council. Um, and, uh, when I learned about the opportunity for Global Troy Advisory Committee, I immediately applied. And so I've been involved since its inception. And I grew up, uh, just to the city to the east in Sterling Heights, went to school with a lot of kids from Troy. And, um, in my youth, I took Italian language classes and folk dancing at the Old Nile School through the Italian Study Group of Troy.
Thanks, Teresa. And also thank you for your nice, uh, public comment from our council meeting Monday night. It's nice of you to call in, talk about International Women's Day. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Uh, next up, Mavita's not here yet, but maybe if she pops in soon, we can kind of have her say a quick hello. Ani Fakori, how about?
Yes, sir. My name is Ani Fakori. And, uh, I've been a resident of Troy.
All that time he was driving, he had no problem with reception. Then he stops and it goes away. All right, well, Ani hopefully can come back. And, yeah, all right, we'll go to, Caitlin's not here, Allison.
Which actually, um, Caitlin asked me to say a little bit about her. I told her we'd be doing these introductions and she sent me a little bit about her. So she said, um, so I attended the Troy School District from kindergarten to ninth grade and my family has been living in Troy since two thousand and seven. I joined the Global Troy Advisory Committee starting fall of two thousand and seven, was a student representative for three years, and just recently was made a full member of the committee this year. Both of my parents immigrated here from China for graduate, or for graduate school in nineteen ninety-nine. I hold their struggles, their sacrifices they made, and my own cultural identity as an Asian American very closely to me. I'm currently a senior at Detroit Country Day and I will be attending Duke University next year, where I hope to study public policy and economics.
Very good. Yes, Caitlin is our first student representative to then become old enough to be a registered voter in eighteen, that she got to be appointed to a, a full-time voting position on Global Troy. That was, that was an exciting thing that happened fairly recently. But thanks to Sarah for letting me know. Uh, Allison, we'll go back to you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Allison Liu. I'm currently attending Troy High School, so I'm a student representative on Global Troy. Um, my family moved here in twenty thirteen and this is my first year on Global Troy. I was like doing some research in the city and I found out there was this committee and there was student, uh, representative positions open. And I was like, I have to be on there because, um, I love learning about other cultures and, yeah.
Thank you. Edna, Allison, but I love our student representatives because they are very good with technology and do a lot of stuff that some of us can't do very well. So thank you, Allison, for all you've done in that part so far as well.
I'm sorry, I don't know what happened.
Uh, Ani's back, or Lisa's voice is. Ani, go ahead and tell us about yourself.
Uh, my name is Ani Fakori. Uh, I've been a resident of Troy since, uh, eighty-six. Uh, I live in Butch Forest. I worked for Chrysler. Um, I came to the States when I was fourteen years old. And, uh, I'm from Jordan originally. My wife's Caldean and I have two boys and a, and a girl. And, uh, I worked for Chrysler and I've been involved with the community quite a bit, all over the state and federal. Uh, I had the honor of bringing, uh, the bridge meeting to the city of Troy, which is the normally meet in Dearborn and Detroit. And that was the first time that. which is the normally meet in Dearborn in Detroit, and that was the first time that came to Detroit. And we had all the law enforcement agencies from the FBI to every, almost every local police department and state, and they just had a great time. And I want to thank the council and the mayor and the city manager and the staff for all you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ani. We can always count on you to give a positive comment on social media. I know Councilmember Hoderick and I mentioned that earlier. You're a great cheerleader for all of us and for the city, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Next up is Naz. How are you, Naz?
I'm doing well. My official name is Saeda Mohidin, and I think it's easier for everybody to call me Naz. It's a middle name. I am basically from India. I immigrated here to US in 1999, or 2000. So it's been almost a little more than 19 years since I'm living in Troy. And it's a wonderful city. It is very welcoming compared to the other cities. And I have two boys who graduated from Troy School District. My boy, my younger one went to Martell, and that's when I met Lisa. And that's I co-chaired with her with the multicultural event, so we've been together ever since. I also volunteered for the diversity and inclusion. That's when I met Cindy. And Cindy is the one who spoke a little bit about the Global Troy and applied, and here I am. That's the thing is...
Great, Naz. Thank you so much. Kayla, Daniela, sorry. Daniela, go ahead.
Yes, hello, everyone. My name is Daniela Nachova, and I'm from Bulgaria. I came to the United States in 1999 with a green card and my husband. Now we have three kids, grandma, and a cat in the house. And we join Global Troy since the foundation, together with Lisa, Naz, Rebecca, who else? I think Ani, Ani also. And I'm happy to... I wear many hats during the day. I work for GM. I'm an accountant and CPA. At night, I teach accounting at Walsh, OCC, and other places, and also volunteer for the Bulgarian School. I'm a founder of Bulgarian Cultural Center, Bulgarian School, and I'm also an editor of newsletter Bulgarians in Detroit. So Global Troy was kind of something that I wanted to do and join and help my city as much as I can. So I'm glad to be here and share ideas with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniela. And if you've seen the red and white striped decorated tree outside of the Troy Library curbside pickup, Daniela, do you want to get just 15 seconds on what that is and why that's there?
Oh, yeah. That's Baba Marta on March 1st. I don't know if you can see where is that? So on March 1st, we put something like this either on our clothes as a bracelet, or in this case, we just decided to wrap a tree, or actually two trees, in front of Troy Library. And we put these big souvenirs, boy and a girl, Peugeot and Panda. This is a spring tradition for Bulgaria and means that we want spring to come sooner. I think it's a great tradition for Michigan, so I'm planning to keep it going.
And it's working. So whatever you did, it's working. Good job. So thank you. Anyway, I just wanted to point that out as well, because I know you did that for us.
Yeah.
Carolina.
Hi, everyone. My name is Carolina Noviasortis. I was appointed within the last year, I believe, so I'm fairly new. I also am on the Brownfield Advisory Board. I am an immigrant. I'm originally from Mexico. I was born there. And I have been a resident of Troy for over 24 years. I would just really like to share things from my culture and perspective with the rest of the Troy community. And I want to keep pushing towards, you know, Troy being a more inclusive and equitable place to live. And I want to make sure that we empower residents' voices that come from different cultures and backgrounds.
Thank you, Carolina. Well said. Next up is Sunil.
Good evening. I'm Sunil Sekri. I have lived in Troy for about 30 years. I even worked in Troy. Actually, on 15 Mile, there's Meritor, and I was Director of IT for Meritor a few years. Although most of my background has been with IBM and HP, working with GM and American Axle and Ford and all of these guys. So for me, on this committee, I think one of the key things I believe that the Global Advisory Committee can do would be to enrich the lives of the residents of Troy. Because we bring diversity, we can all share that with everyone, and so it sort of enriches everyone and improves integration within the city, both things we could do or Global Council can do. I also believe it can work as a marketing thing for Troy, because when we put things on YouTube or you put things on social media, you're trying to... It just helps the overall image of Troy. The third thing I think I like to work on with the component is so we find out a way that we treat each other fairly and equally. And I'm now referring to when somebody goes to apply for a deck from his backyard, or somebody goes to file a report on they've lost some stuff. So whether they are dealing with law enforcement or dealing with some other part of the city, or they're just dealing with each other. And I am also a president of myself, so even in our roles, we kind of treat everybody equally and fairly. So that's what I think I would look forward to helping and supporting with. And I think the other thing I would say is I think you guys represent us so well, and the city council has done an excellent job of the city, especially Mayor Ethan Baker, I just have true appreciation for. All right. Thank you. And I'm glad to be part of this council, Global Advisory Council.
Thank you, Sunil. Appreciate that. And I appreciate your willingness to serve as well. I know you're one of the newer appointees, you and Carolina and Allison are the newest, I believe. I think that's right. And Arjun is actually also new, but he's not here. He's a student representative. You'll have another opportunity to meet him sometime. And Tom, I think you're on. We don't see your face, but are you still dialed in? Can you say hello?
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm glad to see everyone here see the face, but except myself. Sorry, my computer camera has had some issue, couldn't show up. So, yeah, I'm a first-generation immigration immigrant to here, and I relocated from New York City to here about 25 years ago. And working in Michigan auto industry, majorly at Ford and GM. And right now, I'm a Troy resident with four kids. First case is in the U of M College. And the second, the high school, I A East High School, and Smith Middle School and Leonard Elementary School. So all four kind of schools, we have students here. I served as a member for the Global Troy Committee for more than five years. And I like to serve our community, our city of Troy, and to promote the different cultures from around the world. And glad to contribute no more to benefit our city as well as every resident. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it very much. Glad to hear from you tonight. All right, I think that's through all of our introductions, and it seems like that's something... I think the joke is by the time you get the introductions on things like this, the meeting's over, right? I think, actually, in all truthfulness, I think these introductions are a good part of this meeting, actually giving everybody kind of an understanding of where we're coming from, which will actually, I think, aid in our conversation and discussion as a whole. So good idea, Sarah and Mark and Bob for bringing that happening. I'll send it back over to you, Sarah, I'm assuming, or Mark, unless you want to try again. I don't know where.
Can you hear me? Must be a delay, so.
Oh, we can hear you. I can.
We can. It is delayed. It wasn't so bad, Mark. If you have something you want to say, you can go ahead and try. We just won't try to match it up, sync it up to your mouth. That's fine. We can hear you.
Okay. I apologize for the technical difficulties. This is the first time this has happened to me. But my name is Mark Miller. I'm the city manager. I have been with the city over 20 years. I am an urban planner by training. And I started working in the planning department and was a planning director. However, I have now been in the city manager's office longer than the planning department at this point in time. And I have been the full city manager permanently for just over two years now. And a lot of people don't know it, but all of my grandparents are immigrants, two of them from Hungary and two of them from Poland. And so I wasn't... I was around a lot of people who immigrated to this country and didn't speak English as their first language, and in fact, weren't even educated in America. With that, I believe, Sarah, you take the next five slides, and then Bob will read you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I have to say, by the end of that, you were actually synced up. So technical difficulties have been fixed, I guess. There you go. All right, go ahead, Sarah.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for doing those introductions. Honestly, you know, I've been here for going on six months and, you know, working actively with Global Troy and all of the committee members. And it was just really, really nice to hear more background information, because sometimes we don't get to really talk about that. And so it helps me better get to know you a little bit faster, you know, especially because we can't have meetings in person yet. Very much looking forward to that. But anyway, if we can go ahead and go to the next slide, please? Perfect. Thank you. So Global Troy, as the mayor said, has been around for going on five years. And it was established basically to be this advisory committee to city council and to management. Along with that, you know, promoting cultural diversity, inclusion, cultural knowledge and competence, which is something very important to me and I know to the group members as well. And, you know, when I joined this group or this committee, and as a staff liaison, I've seen everyone's like push and drive to educate. And that has been really, really powerful. And if we can actually go to the next slide? Thank you. I asked a couple of the committee members to talk about some of the different programs that we've done or like events that we've done recently. I'm sure you all have seen quite a few of them. But Lisa, if you want to go ahead and start talking about Troy Days?
Thank you, Sarah. So the Troy Family Days has had an international day for three years, 2017, 2018, and 2019. And in 2019, we had 10 hours that we could use to showcase all of the ethnicities that represent the city of Troy. And there's way more to showcase than the amount of time that we are ever given. But it's a huge undertaking. We ended up having all day of Sunday, September 15, with 14 acts performing in seven hours. And we also were given by the Troy Family Days Festival, three hours on Saturday, September 14 of 2019. And we had three acts that performed. And what was showcased were meditation, Bollywood, flute choir, gymnastics, steel drums, bagpipes. And they were showcasing or identifying as African, Buddhist, Bulgarian, Chinese, Croatian, Czechoslovakian, Indian, Irish, Italian, Scottish, Trinidad, Ukraine. And we also had some information tables under the tent. The city of Troy had helped us advertise to recruit groups to perform at this event. And we had a subcommittee of four Global Troy Advisory Committee members to put this whole thing together with the assistance of the remaining board or the remaining members of the Global Troy Advisory Committee. Our budget was just over $1,200 to put this on. And the funds came from the Troy Family Days Festival. And it's a lot of work, but it's... It makes me very proud that we're able to have this type of event. And it brings the whole community together, and I'm looking forward to what may be the International Day coming up in 2021, should it happen this year. Last year, 2020, of course, was canceled.
Thank you, Lisa. That was great. And it is, again, another beautiful representation of the different cultures and the... Well, you've been... I know personally how hard you work to ensure that that event goes off. And it's not easy to coordinate and to wrangle a bunch of performers. So I give you even more props for that. I mean, that's a job well done. So thank you for that. And thank you for that kind of little explanation and refresher for some of us. Sarah?
And then I've asked Daniela to actually talk about two different events, because she's played a part in two vital events that we've had recently. So Daniela, if you want, go ahead.
Yes, the winter holiday traditions, the idea came kind of suddenly during our meeting for a Troy Global Advisory Committee. And after canceling the meetings because of COVID and stuff, I said, wait a minute, we have to come up with something new, something that still can get us together. And I have seen it with the Bulgarian School at work. We also do these videos with people presenting different traditions. So and with city of Troy, it's so easy. We have everybody here, you know? We have the Christians, we have the Kaldeans, we have the Jewish people, we have African-Americans. It was like you just have to reach out to these groups, and they were willing to participate. I did reach out to the Polish group. I remember Greek church, Romanian. We had Rebecca Sam even. So it turns out to be a great video celebration, not just Christmas, but everybody has different traditions. So I should say also thank you to Allison, that the majority of work, the video, Carolina, Lisa, and Sarah, of course. I have to say Sarah's name a couple times because she's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniela. Did you also want to talk about the International Women's Day? Why, is that Sarah's that right?
Yeah, we could. I hope. Have anyone watched the International Women's Day, by the way?
Yes, I did. It was great. You did a great job.
Thank you, Ani. Thank you for the leads. Many people help here, like either giving me some leads, recommendations, who can I talk with. Thank you for the people. I see some of the presenters here. Thank you, Ellen. And Lisa, of course, with coming with original ideas. I really think that the movie about women from Troy, it's a beautiful tribute to all the women in Troy and like to show appreciation for everything that they do. So I think I was even surprised, and so many good messages in this movie you can hear. So I was amazed by the result. And I'm looking forward to do something else, hopefully in person, so we can meet with Sarah, with everybody else. Yes, we do have some good ideas. Or let us know how can we improve or make it better.
Thank you, Daniela. Appreciate that. Sarah?
Carolina, I believe you were going to discuss on Black History Month?
Sure. So for Black History Month, I just want to say quickly, thank you to Mavita Buras, Dr. Teresa Brooks, Sarah, and Mayor Ethan Baker, who made up the subcommittee. and Mayor Ethan Baker, who made up the subcommittee. We had two kind of main events for Black History Month. We had a Black Icon virtual event, where members of the community put together 30-second videos, sharing their thoughts on iconic black figures. And, you know, they consider their contributions to humanity, our nation, and the impact that that person had on them. So, we had a total of 28 videos submitted. And each video was shared on Troy's social media. Some of those black icons included Harriet Tubman, Madam CJ Walker, just to name a few. And we also had participation from several council members, David Hamilton, Ellen Hodorick, Dr. Teresa Brooks, and Anne Erickson-Gault. So, thank you for participating in that as well. We had videos from our state rep, Padma Kupa, and also from the Global Advisory Board, Troy Teachers, and just tons of residents. So, I thought it was great. I thought that a lot of residents were excited to participate and to see like other community members being involved. I think with the pandemic, you know, it's been kind of tough. But I thought that it was like a bright part of the day to see like, oh, like there's someone that we know from the community sharing something about black history. So, I think that we could continue to do events like that in a virtual world, or even after the pandemic. The second event that we did was, we had a Black History Month virtual panel, where on Thursday, February 25th, we had an hour discussion with panelists that included Dr. Phyllis D. Meadows. She's a senior fellow in the health program at the Kraslich Foundation. And we had Cornelius Godfrey, who's the new supervisor of Educational Equity, Inclusion, and Community Relationships at the Troy School District. And we also had Dr. Teresa Brooks, who is our council member. She's also a doctor and she was both a panelist and moderator. And of course, we had our welcome and introduction by Mayor Ethan Baker. And those were streamed to the Troy's YouTube channel and also on the cable channel. And, you know, I think that they were, you know, really important discussions to have. I kind of wish that it was a little bit longer because I wanted to continue, you know, hearing from our panelists. I know that some of the feedback was that, you know, they were excited to learn that we have a new Troy School District Supervisor of Educational Equity, Inclusion, and Community Relationships. And I hope that we can continue doing these kind of panels going forward. And of course, we welcome feedback.
Thank you, Carolina, that's good. Good, good. You didn't thank yourself, but you should thank yourself because you worked very hard on the, that subcommittee as well. And we appreciate all that you did, so thank you.
Yeah, and I, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Sarah, I was just going back to.
I was just going to say, you know, like I've only been here for a few months, but just a snapshot of what the committee can do, even virtually, you know, it's so much harder, I feel like, to get people to take videos of themselves to participate. You know, I feel like often people don't like themselves in video or like their voice. And, and so, I know that this committee has worked really, really hard to make these connections and continue growing like our contact list. And I know that, you know, in the future, we'll definitely be working towards more of these events. And hopefully, we'll be in person soon-ish. And then, you know, we can finding, you know, meet these people in person and hold these events. But if we can go ahead and go to the next slide, please? Great, so we had been asked how, or where we were in the process of reactivating our Welcoming American membership. So, we reactivated in December. And so, since then, I have just been working with our Midwest Regional Manager. Her name is Molly Hillgrass. Basically getting acclimated to what Welcoming America membership allows for us to do, meeting other members of Welcoming America, as well as watching webinars and participating in the member forum. So, for instance, with the member forum, it's very, very helpful if you have any questions or need any advice from other similar, you know, cities or for instance, like committees such as Global Troy. It's been really wonderful. I was able to actually utilize it and ask the forum, basically, if they had any, like DE and I coordinators at the, or consultants that they would suggest that we look into, if that is where the city decides to go. So, it's been, you know, just a very useful resource in that way. And then, as well as with the DE and I plan, if the city, you know, ends up going in that direction, language access is a very big part of that. And currently, Welcoming America is offering language access coaching. And right now, it's just kind of basic level, introducing the members to what it actually is. And then they're also offering consultation and continued education for that, which I find very, very, very valuable. If we can just go ahead and go to the next slide?
Hey, Sarah, real quick, before you go to the next slide?
Oh.
It's on this one too, but will you let Welcoming America know that they've completely taken Michigan off the map? Michigan's not on their logo. I just think that's fascinating. Not very welcoming to them, is what I'm trying to say. So, I, it's not, I'm getting really happy. But I just know, I'm like, something looks wrong there. I thought, oh, we're the world of our own. But, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I hadn't, I didn't even, I didn't even notice, but I will look into that. Okay.
All right.
But yeah, if we can go ahead, okay, thank you. I just wanted to show, we had talked a little bit about council members, watching webinars, finding resources, things like this. So, this is actually the location that you would do it. It's open to everyone. They offer all of their resources to anyone, even if you don't have a login or a membership yourself. If you look on the depiction of the webpage, you can determine which type of resource you'd like. So, they have reports, how-to guides, videos, and also like webinars. And you can search for any keywords or topics. The topics include things like economic development, language access. I mean, I think there's like 10 or 11 different topics that they offer webinars on, reports on, things like that. So, it's a very wonderful resource. And I have actually developed a list. If council is interested, I'd be happy to provide that to you if you would be interested in watching those resources. But anyway, we can go to the next slide, please?
I'm up now. So, I want to tell you about our goal review and recommendations project. We're working with a company called GovHR, who's done a lot of work in the city with, in recent years, including the city manager search process and a classification compensation study. But I want to kind of go back and tell a little story about how goal number one, the community engagement kind of came to be. But like I said previously, I came to the city in June 2019. But I've worked in local government since 2001. Started in a position like Sarah's in Oak Park, was the assistant city manager in Ypsilanti, manager in Burn Dale, Birmingham, Mount Clemens. And I've, in all the places that I've worked, I've seen the importance of community engagement. And I've also seen how a very small number of squeaky wheels can hold a governing body hostage. Because if you, you know, show up and are squeaky enough, you can often get your way, even if there's kind of a silent majority of folks out there who have different thoughts about something. So, working with, many of you will remember Drew Benson, who was the assistant to the city manager previously, and Stephanie in our office and others. I kind of got the sense that the city did a pretty good job of talking. We generate a magazine quarterly, we have email, news, newsletters, social media, all that sort of stuff. But I got the sense that we could kind of, we could do a better job listening. And so, that was something I started to think about. And then the pandemic happened. And at some point during the pandemic, I realized that I, I'm sort of the de facto director of communications for the city. Because the community affairs director reports to me. Our full-time marketing coordinator in city hall reports to me. And then the marketing coordinators in recreation and the library report to me indirectly. And I realized, I'm not really the right person to be the de facto head of communication and community engagement. And so, Mark and I started talking about this and started thinking about, you know, what we wanted to do differently. We had the opportunity last summer, primarily in the summer, to try some of our ideas out with the Library at Village. And frankly, when that process started, the city council really pushed us to come up with a community engagement plan. And we did a survey, we did focus groups, virtual town hall meetings. And, and the Library at Village passed by 64%, which was better than the survey results showed. So, it, that would suggest that our community engagement and community education actually worked and helped make a difference. So, but it was a lot of work on the part of a lot of different people. So, we talked about elevating community engagement as a priority. We talked to the city council about that back in November, when we had some meetings to talk about priorities for the coming year. And we also talked about diversity, equity, and inclusion as being a priority too. It's something that, you know, Mark brings up with staff over and over again. Unfortunately, we don't really have anybody on staff with really deep skills in that area. So, we haven't generated a lot of ideas on how we could move forward on that. So, fast forward to about a month ago, and we were able to bring GovHR on board and a couple of their consultants to help us with these projects. So, so far, what they've done is they've been interviewing stakeholders regarding both community engagement and diversity, equity, inclusion. Primarily, those have been city staff stakeholders. And now, they're going to be interviewing city council members. So, city council members have an opportunity to weigh in on what they want for these two goals. And then ultimately, we hope to get recommendations out of this project that we can then incorporate into the budget for the next fiscal year. We don't know what form it's going to take, if it's going to mean positions or one or more positions, or working with more consultants to flesh this out. But the, you know, long journey begins with the first step. And so, we're taking some of our first steps on both these goals. And so, stay tuned, we'll hope to have more information to talk about during the budget process in April. Any questions on that before we move on?
It's a good question. It's a good question if there's any questions. Any specific questions to what Bob just presented, from anybody? Councilmember Chamberlain Krangga?
Yeah, Bob just wanted to ask, I mean, has your, do we have any idea how this might dovetail with Global Troy? Or is that just something that our consultants, hopefully will have a chance to engage Global Troy and provide some input on that?
Yeah, the short answer is it's kind of to be determined. We know Global Troy has a role to play with diversity and equity in the city. And we know that that's something that, you know, we want to do more of as an organization. So, to what extent, you know, Global Troy will be involved going forward is to be determined. And it was also potentially a topic of conversation for tonight's meeting.
Any other questions right now? All right, what's next?
Next slide, please. All right, so now, this is the main event. This is what you've all come for, the discussion. And so, these are three questions that we came up with to kind of get the ball rolling. And then I'll turn it back over to the mayor to moderate the discussion. So, first is what are city council's expectations of Global Troy? And then, what are Global Troy's expectations of city council or city staff, for that matter? And then, what if any new responsibilities should Global Troy take on? And so, with kind of those two projects as a backdrop, you know, we know we're going to be doing more. And so, now we invite you to discuss these questions.
You gave me the hard part, Bob. But that's, all right. So, this is how I think we should do it. I'm going to pretend we're sitting around the boardroom table in council, in the council boardroom. And I think because the first question is council's expectations, I'm going to start with council members. You certainly, let me put it this way. If you don't have anything you want to share, don't feel like you're forced to have to say something. If you think of something afterwards, I always come back to you. But I'm just going to kind of go across the screen, which means that councilmember Hodorick, I'm going to ask you to go first. It's always good, someone has to go first. So, and we'll do that and I'll work my way across. And then we'll do, we'll do council members, we'll take a breath. And then we'll hear from our Global Troy members. And then we can figure out how to take on that third front. I think that's the best kind of way to do it.
Mayor, we can exit the presentation mode now so that our faces will be bigger for the discussion. Thank you.
And I can't, I don't want to forget that there are people whose faces aren't on, but are part of this too. So, all right, thank you. All right, go ahead, councilmember Hodorick. If you're okay, sorry, it's a lot of pressure.
I thought I saw city manager waving you down. Mark, did you want to say something?
Bob handled it.
Okay.
I think he said Bob handled it, which was pull the presentation down, I think was what Mark was saying. Okay.
All right.
Look how good we're getting at interpreting.
That's fine, all right. Go ahead.
I think my expectation of the, of Global Troy is, I am happy that the team is in place and is a part of the fabric of serving our residents and businesses here. And I know that it's a very valuable group to have on hand. And I think my expectations are that I'm looking to this team to help us keep a pulse of the community. And as a team that is on hand, if we need to have a better, deeper collaborative understanding of an issue or an opportunity that comes before us. So, those are, you know, those are some of my high-level thoughts. In terms of specific thoughts, I was struck very much in the panel, the Black History Month panel that Dr. Brooks facilitated. And the discussion that went on there about how, you know, listening and learning, the more we listen and learn and learn to understand one another and gain empathy with one another, the stronger we are for our diversity, right? And so, the opportunities to continue to learn, you know, a lot of this happens so easily and quickly within our schools because there's ready communities to come together and dialogue. When we get out in the broader community, I miss that. And, and I don't know how we make sure that there's that ripple effect of what you experience as a student and even as a, if you're an involved parent in the schools. You really, it becomes just a part of your day to understand how diverse we are and what a strength it is. When you don't have that connection, you're disconnected from it. And so, I think that that missing piece in the community or how we, how we continue to pull that into the community is something that goes through my mind. Do I have a specific idea of how to do that? No, I just know that when, when we are able to achieve that, and to some extent, the Troy Days work does. And these virtual videos, I think, are more powerful than we might realize. And as we get better and better at them and you get better people speaking, because I'm terrible trying to set up my video. But I think that kind of ongoing dialogue where we just really get familiar with the ideas and the, and all the uniqueness that there is in the community. So, you know, those are my top-of-mind thoughts, nothing specific. But that's where my head is as we come into the meeting. I would literally like to hear from Global Troy about what you think would be valuable to us. And I'm glad for what you've brought forward already. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. And actually, I just want to say really quickly, I think- I think that you might be wrong. Victoria Hamilton's on the screen as well. But we're in a meeting, David, come on. This is a, your video, you made a mention of your video. The fact that these are not perfectly polished videos all the time, I think is far more powerful for the messages they're trying to put out there, right? We're real people, some of us are real people. I mean, so I just want to say the fact that, I mean, I think having anybody, even if the video quality is bad or if the angles are strange, I think that goes to the power of the message itself. And it shows that everybody's got their own, you know, their own way of doing it. So I just have to call you out on that. Because actually, I disagree with you. Go ahead.
Mayor, one quick thing. You know, when Councilwoman Abraham was elected and we were gathered, first elected, and we were gathered to hear the results. When they came through and her mother heard the results, she made the celebratory sound from her youth and her culture that is completely not something that, you know, my Scottish-Irish-German-Polish kind of heritage sound makes. But she was so excited. And this past weekend, when I was watching news reports of the Pope visiting in Iraq, and he was greeted with the same celebratory sound, I recognized it and I knew what it was. I knew exactly, yes, that was Ani thing. And I think to myself, Sarah, in her world where she grew up, probably would have never heard that or understood. Or when she's watching that news report, would have wondered, what is that? And I think what a beautiful thing it is that I've had that experience. That's what makes our community so beautiful. So I hope you don't mind me sharing that with Edna, but I'll never forget it. And I was really struck this weekend when I recognized it for what it was immediately. So that's what living in Troy does. And the more we can give one another these experiences, and sometimes organic opportunities are as great as the well-organized ones, I guess is what's in my head. Creating those opportunities for those experiences just enriches us so tremendously. So I'll stop now, thanks.
All right, I'm glad you shared that story because knowing Edna, she never would share a story like that because she's very quiet about that stuff. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I see that Navida Buris has joined us. And well, Navida, just so you know, we're going through council members' expectations of what we'd like to see from Global Troy, that it's going to be Global Troy's turn. And I'm going around the screen and calling on everybody. So welcome. And I will also remind you to mute yourself until it's time for you to speak, okay? Maybe she's not there. But she's on the screen, she's there somewhere. Anyway, all right. Councilmember Erickson Gault.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to highlight and echo what Councilmember Hoderek talked about in terms of listening and learning and also what our Assistant City Manager Bruner talked about in terms of hearing from people that we don't usually hear from. I think that has been a problem in our city to some extent, not just in terms of hearing people from diverse backgrounds, but just hearing people who don't, you know, who aren't that squeaky wheel, as Bob pointed out. I think there are a lot of communities in Troy that are kind of insular and are not really out there and projecting their wants and wishes forcefully. But yet, it doesn't mean that they don't have things that they want to see in our city. One of the most important things that we do as council members is represent everybody in the city, regardless of our own individual backgrounds. It's our responsibility if we representing everybody. And if we're not hearing from various communities, we can't be representing everybody. And we can't be trying to make Troy what everyone in Troy wants it to be. So summing that up, I think, from my perspective, I think one of the best things that Global Troy can help us do is reach out to those communities so that we can listen and learn from them on what it is that they most value about the city, what do they want to see different? What needs do they have that aren't being met? So that the diversity is, it's just not a thing, that the diversity enriches the city by us connecting with all the various diverse groups, understanding what it is that they want to see happen in Troy so that we can deliver a Troy that everybody wants to see. So that's what I would think in terms. Another thing that I would want to, my expectation would be, again, along the terms of listing, is for those of you on Global Troy to tell us, you know, what you think needs to happen to make Troy a community that fully embraces diversity, equity, and inclusion. Tell us what we can do as council members, either from a policy perspective, you know. One of the biggest things we do is determine the annual budget. And I've heard this said many times, your budget is a statement of your values. And so we want to make sure, I mean, there's things that everybody in Troy values. We all value, you know, safety and streets without potholes and all the, regardless of your background, you value those sort of things. But there are other values that are maybe unspoken and not highlighted. And to the extent that those of you on Global Troy who are in touch with diverse communities can tell us what you're hearing, what you're seeing, who should we be getting in touch with? Who should we be reaching out to? Kind of along the lines of what Bob was talking about earlier about making sure that we're engaging with everybody in Troy. I think that's something that I would hope that you could help us do. And also, just tell us what you think Global Troy should be doing. You know, I, we would, the committee's there for a reason, not just to be an extension of council, but to do, to decide on your own what you think is, should be the goals of your committee. So I'm very much looking forward to hearing what your expectations are. So thank you, and I appreciate this opportunity for us to get together, get to know each other, and share our expectations.
Thank you, Councilmember Erickson Gault. I'll snake around, so I'm going to skip Lori. I'll go to Councilmember Abraham.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Councilwoman Hoderek mentioned, you know, wanting the Global Troy Advisory Committee to be the pulse of the community. And I would share, I share that opinion. I also want you to be the voice of the community. In many cases, immigrant populations are afraid to speak up, to use their voice because perhaps the country that they came from, interactions with the government were not favorable and not welcome and were something to be avoided. And that's a huge paradigm shift when you think about the community that Troy is and wants to be better at. And so I would, I would look to the advisory committee to help us hear those voices of the unheard, who are shy to be heard, who don't want to stand out because they don't want to stick out, what we want to know. I want to hear, and I'm hoping that the Global Troy Advisory Committee can, is representing that voice, can tell council what the community wants us to know, where they see maybe implicit bias that we're not seeing, where they're seeing they're not treated with dignity, not just, you know, by the city government, by maybe their neighbors, where they're not being treated with equity. Because we can't put together a plan or set conditions to fix something that we don't understand. And I think we're starting to hear that a little bit more from the community. But it can't just be individual voices. I think, you know, Bob mentioned sometimes the squeaky wheel gets heard the most and therefore that issue is addressed when there might be other bigger, more pervasive issues that aren't being addressed because we're not hearing it. And so I would really implore the Global Troy Advisory Committee to really speak up. I have loved the webinars and the virtual programming that's been going on during the pandemic. And I still think there's a place for it, even when we can see each other again in person. They have been so engaging. So, you know, perhaps there's, you know, a series, a quarterly webinar series that's developed that's very similar to the one that council member, or Mayor Protown Brooks was just moderating. You know, it could be a whole series that perhaps could be developed or town halls. It doesn't always have to be virtual. But if we can put together a program and just have that be maybe an ongoing activity that goes on in Troy, that may, to Councilwoman Hoderek's point, become that authentic engagement because it's not a special one-time event, it's an ongoing thing. And I'd say the last thing I was thinking about in terms of how perhaps the Global Troy Advisory Committee could help out is referring back to Goal One that Bob had talked about earlier, which is important communications from the city. You know, again, we do have a very large immigrant population in Troy, and English, in some cases, is a second or third language. And I know from my own experience, you know, English was my parents' third language. And while they were fluent in it, when it came to things like official documents or medical jargon, when it comes to more specialized language, it could be a little troublesome, and they usually leaned on their kids for support and helping translate. So when I think about the Goal One of improving the city's communication of important information to the community and engagement, you know, we have a website that's in English. Are there areas of really critical and key information that maybe we need to broaden it to be in other languages to help support that part of our community? So things to think about and get, you know, good insight from our advisory committee.
Thank you, Councilmember Abraham. Very good. Next up, Councilmember Chamberlain Krangga.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start by saying just keep doing more of what you're doing with these amazing communication initiatives, the outreach with the webinars and just all the opportunities to invite our diverse residents to come in and share about their background. I know I was honored to share my Black Icon, someone who I realized had inspired me to follow my social sector work that I do as someone I had met in college. So just thank you for putting that together. I know it was a lot of work to do. And even my son taking part in the holiday traditions that we shared out. In terms of other things that are on my mind, you know, as others have shared about being the pulse and the voice in the community, I think those are perfect expressions. And as I opened up with, is, you know, we'd look to you all to let us know if there are issues of discrimination in our community. And during COVID, there's been a lot of talk about anti-Asian sentiment around the country and incidents. And if that is true in our community, and there is no place for that in our community, we need to know. And we hope that you can let us know if there are those cases as well as any form of anti-Blackness and other forms of discrimination as we've seen our community come together and stand against those forms of discrimination. So just keeping us informed of that. The second thing that comes to mind is around our Welcoming America membership. And thank you, Sarah, for walking us through what that all involves. I know when I was on Global Troy earlier, that was something that we were the first Global Troy to put that forward. And I know that was very important to us. Many of us showed up to city council to really advocate for that. I still wonder if there is an opportunity to create a sort of a plan. And I would welcome input from Global Troy if that's something that you're interested in. I see that you have the possibility and some interest in creating subcommittees. But what I'm thinking is in terms of a plan around really utilizing that in the sense of maybe whether it's once a month or once a quarter, if there's a resource that we could share out via our social media channels with our community, that would be useful. I hear once a year, they offer a conference where you can learn more. And maybe that's something that either Global Troy with city council members could take part in, as well as thinking about Troy Days and all of Lisa's amazing work she does. And as Lisa knows, that has often coincided with Welcoming Week, which is a week where we just, we welcome our new Americans and immigrants in our country and just really be intentional about how we liaise with our welcoming Michigan local rep and to see what we can bring to bear. And often, they come to that when we're able to do it in person and be able to offer resources to residents. So I think there's still an opportunity to map out some of the things that we could use and to have a plan of how we might be more intentional about sharing some things with the community and as well as for us to take part in any trainings and webinars, I think would be very useful. The other thing is something that's been close to my heart, and I know that this is true for a good number of you on Global Troy, is when it comes to diversity, equity, inclusion. And we know, and I have been fortunate in working at Kresge, and I led a publication last year on racial equity, this year on racial justice, and those things are different, is being able to get at the difference between diversity, equity, and inclusion. And each is different. And I do think work needs to be done to kind of build alignment around that. And I think that dovetails with what the city is aiming to do. But I think many of you know that there's been a strong passion to be able to, at some point, develop some sort of diversity, equity, and inclusion plan. And I know there is, I'm on Global Troy. Would love to hear where you still stand with all of that. But I know there has been a strong interest. And I, you know, was on a group where we started working on one. And I'm not sure we had the full resources to move forward. And at one point, I even went to now-city manager Miller, if I remember, we had a phone call, and I offered to pay money for a consultant to help us work on one. And I recognize probably right now, we need to wait to see what happens with HR Gov, their assessment, and, you know, what sort of resources there might be in the future in City Hall and the way that they could partner, of course, with Global Troy to develop something around a diversity, equity, and inclusion plan. But that's something that has been near and dear to my heart with a city of our vast diversity that we don't have one at this point. I did share, I think it was last spring or summer, an example of, it was called an anti-racism plan that Huntington Woods has created. And it's actually very short and very high level as a framework. And I happen to have a number of work colleagues, friends, who developed it. And I remember I circulated that as well to council and to Global Troy and hope you had a chance to look at it. But I think there's some different visions. And we'd love to hear, how are you thinking around having some sort of equity plan? And, you know, any thoughts about what that would mean? And in my journey around desiring this plan and trying to start something, I did hit the point of recognizing there needs, we need to have education first. We need to find alignment around what these terms mean. And educate as well. We all need to grow in the education, our own implicit bias training that we all need to, we would all benefit having. And I know I would benefit continuing to have that every year. And so finding some ways to be able to get input and to find educational resources that we can share out, both starting with ourselves, the city, and even our community. So I still feel that we'd love us to move as a city towards having some sort of plan and guide because that's a plan that could set structures and systems and policies. And for those of you who've studied a lot around diversity, equity, inclusion, is you have diversity, and we do as a city. And I think we do, we seek to celebrate diversity. And you guys are doing that as Global Troy. But we know to move from the celebrating of diversity and growing of cultural competency to getting to a place where people feel that inclusion and getting to a place of equity, that means tackling structures, systems, and policies. And that is that means tackling structures, systems, and policies. And that is the only way you go about it. And so I think that having some sort of DEI plan or something of that sort to help move, move us towards, towards that and to hear all of your diverse perspectives and that and be able to take that as a plan out into your communities or for your communities, that was the original vision, for them to inform that plan and develop. So I would just welcome your input and see where you feel, how you feel about this at this point in time. So those are some of my, the things that I would, I, I'd love to see us continue to do. And I know that for many of you, those are on your heart as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga. Appreciate that. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. There's already been so much extremely valuable feedback from my fellow council members. Many of the thoughts I already had, they've already spelled out. And so I thank you for that. I just wanted to point out, it was really cool to hear about Lisa and Nas's work at Martel. Martel was my elementary school I went to 28 years ago. So it's great to hear of all the wonderful things you were doing there and to keep the Mustangs going strong. The, this is something I've talked a lot about and with a lot of different, with these joint meetings, it's something I'm thinking a lot about this year and it's our city's master plan. The master plan is the aspirational document that tries to envision the future of our city. And in its core, a lot of it is about development, but it also has so much more. It's also about cultural development. There's even some things about sustainability. And I think it's critical that the master plan process, which is going to take place later this year, maybe in the summer and the fall, includes as diverse of a voice as possible. So I want to, I, I want to, you know, implore the Global Troy Advisory Committee to try to be a part of the master planning process and try to use your influence to encourage more, a more diverse voice to be involved in that process. Those are the kind of things where we have in-person, community engagement like that. We'll probably, we do lack a more diverse voice. And I think it'd be incredibly critical. We, we do these master plan updates every five years typically. We legally have to at least consider updating it. And this round, I think it's really crucial to get that voice, but not just to hear that diverse voice, but also to include a lot of diversity, diversity, equity, inclusion concepts in the master plan as well. And I, I would implore the committee to also look at other communities' master plans to see what is out there and what we can bring here as well. There, there's going to be a lot of different stakeholders involving the master plan. It's an extremely complicated and long document that I've read many times and probably need to read many more as we go on throughout the year, but it's a critical piece of the future of our community. And I want all Troy residents to be involved in that. That is the crux of my expectations. It's, it's a big task and, and it'll be later on in this year where that discussion will heat up. But it's something that really brings out the passion in our residents when they see development in our city. One thing I often think of too is kind of one of the foundational documents of the master plan was the Troy Futures Plan or the Troy 2020 Plan from about 15 years ago. And one concept it talked a lot about was villaging in, in Troy. And what that is, is kind of like a, a few miniature downtown areas throughout the city. And in essence, we kind of have some kind of cultural elements to that already when you have the Polish Community Center and other areas. And so I, I'd like a diverse voice to see how that kind of villaging concept could maybe become stronger. We're going to do a lot of discussion about our neighborhood nodes, which is kind of what evolved out of that villaging concept. And I'd like to kind of have a cultural aspect to that. I think it would be very important. That's kind of what I'm thinking now. And I thank you everyone for all your hard work and everything you've done already. It was fantastic.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. Good insight. Mayor Protown Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. So it's always hard to go last because there were, there were such great ideas from my fellow council members. But I did want to say that, you know, as City Council, one of the things that obviously we've struggled with as a whole is communication and community outreach. And as Bob mentioned, I, you know, we're in the process of potentially considering a full-time communication director to help us with this. But I really do feel that Global Troy can help us bridge that gap. We are a very diverse community. However, even despite this diversity, we sometimes tend to remain in our own groups and stay with people that we feel comfortable with. And we're not always interacting with each other and really listening to each other and really understanding the issues and needs that each community has or is facing. And so, you know, I do think that some of the things that we can consider as Carolina mentioned and Councilmember Abraham mentioned, you know, I do think holding some of those panel discussions and community discussions can be very beneficial. And there's so many opportunities for these discussions. You know, the topics can range and, and as Councilmember Abraham said, it can be kind of a, a series of, of conversations. But it really helps to open up the lines of communication and allows us to really better understand kind of issues that various communities are facing. And also, you know, as a council member, I would like to hear more from Global Troy about what the needs are of various communities. And it can come in the form of, you know, I would like to hear directly from them, I would say that. Maybe in the form of a monthly letter or other form of, you know, direct communication, I think would be helpful. And the other, my other thought was, you know, as a community where many immigrants do come and settle, in addition to just being a welcoming community, it would be nice to maybe do things like holding an annual welcoming celebration for immigrants as well. But really, there's so many possibilities and so many things that I think that we could do. And I really do see Global Troy being of great value and being very instrumental in really helping us bridge the gap of communication within the cities.
Thank you, Mayor Protown Brooks. Sorry. Did I cut you off? I'm sorry. Okay. Appreciate it. So I'll, I'm going to try to bridge the gap over to Global Troy because I serve on both, right? So the council has said a lot of stuff that I've already, that I had written down and I'm crossing it out. Doesn't mean I'm not going to talk forever still, guys. Sorry, you know better. But I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity to have us come together, first of all. I think that, you know, we, when I first got on Global Troy, when I first got elected mayor and then went on to Global Troy, you'll remember some of those of you who were there at Global Troy, we talked a lot about it at my first meeting, you know, kind of why we hadn't heard from Global Troy in a while or, you know, what, what was going on. And, you know, I said it then, I'll, I'll say it here, you know, we, we went through kind of a rough time on council and with obviously previous city manager. And so it was not a, not a time when there was a lot of togetherness with that last council. And so that kind of filtered out into Global Troy. There wasn't really a place for you all to come to the table and work with us on some issues. And so, you know, one of my goals has been trying to, to, to use the talents that you all have and get us like, we have this Global Troy Advisory Committee, let's, let's make it active, appropriately active, obviously, right? I mean, there's always, you, you are an advisory committee to council. So that's why I thought, okay, great, we finally get to have this joint meeting, we can kind of hear from everybody, we'll be able to talk about, you know, just get a little bit on the same page. Obviously, there's, we could talk for hours tonight and come up with ideas and things, but that's not the purpose of tonight. This is a springboard to where city management can, you know, work with council and Global Troy to, on some key areas. So I think we've already heard some great things coming from the council side of it. I, from the Global Troy perspective a little bit, I, I realize kind of lacking here is that you talked about the winter holidays tradition video, we talked about Troy Family Day, International Day, the Black History Month events we've had, the International Women's Day event that we've had. But what we didn't talk about is that, so Global Troy kind of took it on their own to decide in these last few meetings at the end of last year and into this year that we were going to work on having a year of celebratory, educational videos or events. If we're not meeting in person, it's more virtual, obviously. So we obviously started with the holiday traditions. We did some, a little bit of Martin Luther King Day came up right away. So we, we addressed that by pointing out some resources and other, pointing to some other resources. Then we moved into Black History Month, you saw what we did there. Now we're doing International Women's Day and, and the month. But what we kind of talked about was doing some sort of quarterly reconciliation of the events and holidays that had happened in our different diverse cultures in the preceding few months and then doing like a, a, a video montage of the different things that were done because we, Global Troy really feels like it's important to obviously celebrate the diversity by showing what the different cultures are doing in our city, but also that's a key component to education. So Global Troy on its own has already kind of decided to do that throughout the year. So you'll be seeing more of these types of events and videos, assuming council doesn't say no. And I'm, I'm certain this council will not say no. We've already heard good, positive feedback from everybody. And that was the other thing I, I wanted to say, you know, I talked a little bit about some division in the past. But I was very, I, I remember sitting in, in the, the lower level conference room at a Global Troy meeting saying, I'm very, very confident that this council now would be very supportive of the works of what Global Troy wants to do and and working hard promoting that. So I'm, I'm again excited that we have that opportunity. I, I love everything I'm hearing so far from everybody, all, all my fellow council members. And I think that it absolutely is going to, going to create a great synergy between Global Troy and City Council, which will then be great for the residents of our city. I am going to stop talking for right now, which is pretty short for me. And I'm going to start with some Global Troy. Mavita, you came on a little bit late. Welcome, Mavita Buras. She's been on Global Troy a long time and she was instrumental in our Black History Month work as well. So thank you, Mavita, for that. Mavita, when we, now we just heard from council, what expectations are from council, from Global Troy. Now we're going to move to Global Troy on what either expectations from City Council or thoughts they have about what they would like to do as a committee. And so I'm going to go through all of you next. So be ready for that if you can. And since you came on late, we did introductions early. If you wouldn't mind just giving, you know, 20, 30 seconds when we get to you about introducing yourself as well, okay? Just when it's your turn. So hold on, I get the time.
Okay.
So very good. All right. So let's transition over to the, the Global Troy members. I started that ball rolling. The first Global Troy member on my screen is Daniella. So I'm going to start with you, Daniella, if that's okay.
Sure. Okay, I'll be quick. Just one, two, three. Number one, DEI plan. Yes, definitely yes. I don't think we have the competencies to do it like the Global Troy Advisory Committee. So I think we'll be more on the city to lead this process and maybe we're going to play the role as consultants or something like this. Okay, so that's number one. Number two, city downtown, Troy city downtown. I've heard from my community with teenagers, we live in Troy, but our children have to go to Royal Oak or to different cities, you know, to go out and meet with teenagers and maybe, oh, here you go, Allison is nodding the head, maybe she can support me. We need to have a place where our teenagers can safely gather together. Like, you know, a city area downtown. Like I'm from Europe, coming from Europe, this is very typical. And I know there is a Polish, Polish center and restaurant, but not just restaurant, just as open area for city downtown. Number two. Number three, I agree totally with Councilmember Abraham about interactions with government and police. Like in my country, you don't talk with police. It's just, or you talk only if you're in trouble. So we need to change this perspective. And now with COVID, I see more and more topics and conversations on mental health. And I don't think Troy will be excluded. So I can imagine what's going to happen this coming year, when they let us go back to work, to school. A, a big problem is coming and we have a doctor on the, on the conversation. So maybe she can also mention, we need to start working on this. Mental health, very, very important. Kids, teenagers, adults, everybody is affected by this pandemic, in my opinion, at least. So this was number three. Totally agree with webinar series, town halls. We can kind of make it team oriented, getting to know your neighbor. And have, if we continue with the short videos, getting to know their most, immigrants or, or not, is just getting to know their personal story. And every story, every person has an interesting story. And we can learn about how to say, to cheer in Calvian or like I learned about poinsettias are from Mexico. Like I'm learning so much from these movies. So yeah, this type of webinars, getting to know your neighbor or something like this. This was number four. Number five, elections. Elections and translations. I think someone already mentioned some documents could be translated in different languages to help. And like, I think also the, the library mileage was mentioned. Yeah, working with the community does help. And it will help with elections because when you see this big bulletin and, you know, and language issues, yeah, it's a problem. So a little bit more work during election time. I would recommend. And that's it.
Thank you, Daniella. Good points. Appreciate it. Lisa.
I want to thank all of the City Council members and Mayor Ethan Baker for continuing the Global Troy Advisory Committee and our conversation and openness tonight. It's been very valuable. I know that this, this committee was a vision of the former mayor Slater and the transition was nice and smooth. The only unfortunate thing was this thing called COVID-19. We haven't had as much face time with Mayor Baker as we did with Mayor Slater. And so I thank the city of Troy for opening up the virtual madness. You know, we all had to force ourselves to learn how to use these types of platforms to communicate and conduct business. And I'm glad that you included Global Troy Advisory Committee because over the last 12 months, there have been a lot of historic things that have occurred where a committee like this could be useful to the city. And a couple of things that I, I really appreciate Councilmember Hodrick mentioning that we are a pulse in the community. That really means a lot. And Rebecca mentioning the DEI plan again. It, it is so important that the city of Troy create this document. But I have to agree with Daniella that I, it's not in my wheelhouse and I'm not sure if there's any other Global Troy Advisory Committee members that have this background to be able to pull, pull this together. So I, I think there's a lot of useful individuals on our committee that could help with that DEI plan, but we really do need some guidance with that. A few things that you ask, what are expectations? It's more of just to be aware of, to continue to promote diversity and inclusion at every level of city government. And to consider religious beliefs when scheduling events. A lot of people of diverse backgrounds don't want to be the one to speak up and say, well, I have a religious holiday that day. And it might not be printed on our calendars like Christian holidays might be. So just to be mindful and to consider these things. You know, I don't think that, that our city would ever fathom scheduling like a city council meeting on like Good Friday or Christmas Eve, for example, but you might have had one on Yom Kippur, which is a high holy holiday for the Jewish community. To also consider Muslim holidays like Ramadan, Eid, and other cultural celebrations like the festival of lights. And I'm not talking about Hanukkah, I'm talking about Diwali. The community likes to use fireworks and, you know, some community members might be wondering why fireworks are going off in our city on a day that's not the Fourth of July. So to be mindful of these types of celebrations and maybe allow for a special opportunity to celebrate in the manner that the celebrations are meant to be celebrated. So those would be a few of the things that I'd like City Council to be mindful of and the city of Troy to be mindful of. We're here to help guide you and, and let you We're here to help guide you and, and let you know when these events are happening. And, uh, you know, when these kind of scheduling conflicts, uh, do arise, to consider it on a case by case basis. The, uh, the city, uh, have an anti-racism clause and, and work on anti-racism. Uh, it's not something Global Troy Advisory Committee has talked a whole lot about. But, um, we, we are here to guide City Council and the mayor and each other in, in the, the times that are turbulent and the times when we are able to celebrate our backgrounds, our cultures, our religions. So I want to thank everyone again for having that open ear this evening. And, um, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it very much. It's good, also very good insights. It's great. Next up will be Sunil.
First, I do have to say, I think I was extremely heartened by listening to all the council members. I, uh, I think it was, it was very encouraging. And it was very motivating. So I, I, I feel very good about it. And I think this, this meeting has helped, uh, because I was not too sure the response or the participation that the council needs. And, and I think a lot of very, um, the very fact that they want to look at all different aspects of this, uh, has been very, very encouraging. I think it allows the global council, uh, global advisory council to, to provide some good quality feedback to you. So I, I, I think I feel very good about it. I think just like councilwoman Rebecca said, Rebecca Chamberlain said, um, some things may be structural. So as an example, there has to be, if we are an advisory, uh, group, then how do we communicate to the council? There has to be, the advisor should be able to communicate in some format, not once a year. But maybe there are other ways of communicating. And I think you said, if you find some issue about discrimination, how do we share that with you? Or if you come up with some new ideas or requests for budget, how do we bring that to you? I think right now we are starting out in a way that, um, that I think we should think about it. I think it's a, um, because all of these things would require some kind of mechanism or structure or process. So, so that would be good. So I think the, the other, uh, thing could be, uh, there can be a joint activities, I would say, um, that we'll think about. And I have, uh, by listening to you, I have a number of thoughts in addition to the ones we just went through. But I like to talk to other, uh, uh, global advisory group members, uh, before, before bringing them to you. Uh, but there are a lot of ways that we can fulfill one of your requests, which was, how do we find feedback from the communities? How do we get input from various different communities to you? Which will, which will enrich your thinking, whether it's in a master plan format, whether it's in a, uh, what their needs are, what their expectations are, or how to engage. We just need to come up with some formats for you. And, uh, whether it's the format is a town hall or format is a, is a, um, is, is Zoom call like this or go to meeting call. So we'll, we'll go through that. But I would say this, I think I'm, I'm very encouraged. And, um, and I think you guys have, uh, already provided very positive feedback. And I think encouragement. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunil. Appreciate your comments as well. Uh, next up, Allison, go ahead.
Um, so first thanking, I can speak on behalf on, of the whole Global Troy Advisory Committee and thanking council for all of your support and encouragement for all of the events that we have been doing. I remember my first meeting, um, back in November, and we were talking about all the things we wanted to do in the future. And Daniella brought up that we should do something now. And that's kind of how the winter holiday traditions idea came up. And we pulled it together in one month. And, um, I know I was like very nervous about how it would be received and whether it would be successful or not. But having all of council support really just motivates us and like means a lot to us to keep doing things. And I think from there, like, our goal was to just really celebrate the different voices of, um, the community. I know I learned a lot, like, um, like Daniella had said about the poinsettia being, um, from Mexico, which is something I never knew. And we really helped, I think the goal was to just really bring voices that aren't heard often to the table. And, um, I know several council members did address society, but I think we've done a great job doing that. And we definitely should, um, bring voices up that aren't being heard right now. But I think we also need to move into including everyone. And I think right now we're just kind of all celebrating ourselves within our own communities and sharing our traditions. But, um, kind of almost like getting into the other traditions is what might be, um, hard right now. And then maybe a struggle just because we're online and through virtual formats, it's very hard to be a part of, um, another person's community. But just having a segue or a plan to like help incorporate people to be able to be introduced to other communities and maybe, um, get to know other communities even better to really hit that inclusion point. And I think that really goes with like the reach, uh, the outreach. I think just, um, I know when we first moved here, um, back in 2013, you know, we like, I knew the people from school and I knew like, um, people of Chinese background and Taiwanese background. But really trying to hit the other communities was kind of hard because it was just, there was just really no way to like reach other people other than like talking to your neighbors or something. So just having opportunities to speak to others and meet others would be really helpful. And I also wanted to touch on the downtown, um, point. And actually, it's really funny because a few days ago I was talking to my friends and I was like, I wish Troy had a downtown because, um, if we want that experience, we need to go to Rochester or Royal Oak. And having a downtown, um, downtown area or something similar where we can like walk around and get food, um, obviously when it's safer, but just get food and have fun and be able to hang out in the city. And obviously I think with the cultural take on it, it would be really amazing. Um, so that it's, I was like, wow, it got brought up today. And that was something I was talking to my friends about. So, um, I think from council, obviously, um, I love discussion and I love more. But I think, um, really continuing that support that you guys have been giving us is really, um, great.
Thank you, Allison. I, I'm just going to say, I, I love that we have student representatives on some of these boards and committees because I think they, number one, they're like very impressive, but they, they always bring a perspective that sometimes some of us don't always have. So thank you, Allison. Appreciate it very much. I'm going to go down to, uh, Carolina.
Hi, everyone. Um, first off, I just wanted to acknowledge our councilwoman Rebecca Chamberlain for doing, um, a Black History Icon video. I didn't mean to leave you out, um, when I named all the other people as well. Um, some of my thoughts for that, I hope that we, you know, don't just celebrate Black History Month once a month. Um, but it's something that we do continuously throughout the year. Um, it was just one of the thoughts that I had after we did the panel. Um, and continue to have talks or, you know, panels on intersectionality, race, diversity and inclusion, um, throughout the year, not just, you know, when it's kind of like the designated month. Um, I feel like we have a good opportunity to partner with the library. Um, they do a lot of events, um, also related to that kind of thing. We could share books, movies, um, and different resources, you know, on the city page to keep that discussion going. Um, another point that I had was I hope that when the council and the mayor, um, you know, review and look at appointments for the different boards on the city. Um, you know, we have tons of qualified individuals, um, in the community. And I think that we can do, you know, always a better job to increase representation on the boards, um, to better reflect, you know, the diversity of our city. Uh, a lot of the members on the Global Troy Advisory Board, you know, are members of different, of these different communities. And so we would be happy, you know, to recommend, um, you know, that individuals apply. Um, and that's something that I'm personally trying to do is get, you know, more diversity, um, into the application process so that, you know, that can be considered when, um, making appointments. Um, another point is that I hope that we can continue to engage new voters. Um, I know that the city in the past has done like a ceremony, um, with new citizens. And I hope that we can continue to engage them in, you know, the political processes, um, regardless of partisanship. And I would just like to add is that, um, I know that, you know, the Global Troy Advisory Board has a page on, on the city of Troy website. And currently, you know, it's really simple. It just has our meeting notes and like the purpose of the board. And I would like to see that turn into something more where we could share more resources, um, with the community. We could have translated documents there. Um, and I just wanted to know, you know, if the city is okay if we add more to that site. Um, obviously, you know, it's, you know, checked that it's okay to post different things. And maybe it goes through some kind of review process. But I think that that could be a page that could be used to, to put different resources for, um, the members of our community. Um, and that's really all I have right now. I just wanted to say thank you again to our council members, um, and our mayor for everything that you're doing. And big thank you to Sarah, who has been, you know, such a help, um, and a support, um, basically every single thing that we've done so far this year. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Carolina. Good stuff, for sure. Um, Nas, you'll go next.
Well, um, I would first like to thank the council members for taking the time and showing interest in Global Advisory Committee and Mayor Ethan for, you know, like encouraging us and listening to our ideas. So that has to be, Daniella has taken this short, um, videos and it has really, you know, like showcased so many, um, uh, different, uh, ideas. I would like, like, if council members would think about doing some budget to be a Troy Global Advisory. Uh, and we've been talking about it since the inception that we do not have a budget. Do any programs or anything with that. And, um, I do know that the city had a lunch and lawn, or lawn, uh, a program a few years ago where each ethnic group was invited and they spoke about it. They would bring their program back. And talking about the downtown, what Addison and Daniella has said, I echo, I echo their thoughts because my son has moved out of Troy. Troy is a city for old people. They do not have any downtown or a fun thing to be with. And he's moved to Madison Heights and he is like so I don't know, like, we become, we attract more younger generation to the city of Troy. We can communicate, you know, like, although there are people moving inside for the good schools, um, I'm sure that many of them are not aware as to how much Troy is doing them as a welcoming city. So if we could, you know, like somehow the city would, you know, like, um, showcase more or, you know, like be more vocal about it, that they're more welcoming. And, and like people ask me, you know, like, oh, what's welcoming America? When did we become a member? What's it all about? So if we were, you know, like, talk about it more and make the immigrants feel more welcomed, then that would be really great. Thank you.
Thank you, Nas. Appreciate it, uh, very much. Uh, Mavita, you are next. And don't forget to do a quick, quick introduction as well. Can anybody else hear Mavita? Mavita, we can't hear you. We see, we see you unmuted and we see you talking, but we can't hear you. And you can't hear us. Can you hear us? I don't speak hand. Uh, why don't you, why, do you want to try to go back out and then come back in? And we'll go to, let's go to Ani right now. Ani, you're still there, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, go ahead, Ani.
First of all, I just, uh, want to say one thing. Uh, Mayor Baker, you are right. We have a great city council and it's really working for the people. Appreciate you all. Mark Miller, thank you for everything you're doing. Doing a great job. I think our job is to become more of an ambassador for the city of Troy when we are, whatever we are. And let the community know that we are involved. We know who to, if they need anything, let them know who to contact. Really, I've been having a great time since Mayor Gene Stein was the mayor and I was the president of PTA at Brookfield Academy. I used that to get people to the teacher appreciation dinner dance and it worked. And also Cindy Stewart, always been very helpful. Thank you all. I think we all need to be ambassadors, uh, and share our values. I agree with everybody, the city council members, the mayor and, uh, advisory board. Everything they said, I'm not going to repeat anything. But it's, it's, uh, like when I, when I brought the bridge meeting here, there was over a hundred law enforcement agency. That was so hard to get here because they were always either in Dearborn or in Detroit. So I had to go through the leadership, convince them before I invited him here. And then we had, uh, the owner of Larsa and the Dream Market furnished their, the, the lunch. That was the biggest turnout we had. So I think we all, it was very important. Not many people, and you mentioned Troy, they think, oh, that's the city in the suburbs. They really didn't know the diversity and the people we have here. So thank you all, everybody for doing. And we just need to be an ambassador and find ways, if anybody got problems, to try to come to us so we can help them and tell them who to deal with.
Thank you, Ani. Good points. Appreciate it very much. Don't forget to mute yourself now. All right, uh, let's go to Tom.
Hi, uh, everyone's, uh, showing very, uh, exciting and, uh, joined together for this evening's event. We meet together. So everybody shows the interesting, how we can, uh, build our Troy, uh, better and, uh, safer. So, uh, great ideas from everyone. Uh, I, uh, totally agree. But, uh, one thing that, uh, just, uh, showing up in our community is, uh, I don't know if you, uh, heard about it. It's, uh, in Los Angeles or, you know, California or New York, uh, there's a lot of, uh, hate crime, especially for Asian people. I think that Troy is a, a safe place and the safest, uh, city in Michigan. And, uh, not so many, uh, crime, uh, activities. But, uh, I remember if correctly is, uh, at the beginning of our, you know, the, uh, virus shutdown, uh, some incident happened in our, uh, city of Troy as well. At that time, I, I, uh, remember I sent an email, uh, to, you know, the assistant manager. But I do not, uh, heard anything back, uh, anything, you know, uh, we can enforce, allow, enforce, uh, to ensure our, uh, that Troy, uh, would be, uh, safer. That, that will be, uh, great.
I think it's echoing in your call. All right. But now you're not going to be able to have your sound probably, right? But Tom, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Tom, but, uh...
Yeah, uh, so, uh, that, that's, uh, the, the number one, uh, 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 since it's safety. Number two is, uh, our, uh, city is famous with our education quality. But during, uh, during the, uh, online courses or, you know, in school, uh, classes, uh, that, uh, the quality is, uh, still remain the same. Or, you know, how we can ensure our education, you know, uh, quality is still remain the same or even better. That's a kind of concern from our community.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else?
No, that, that's just beyond the, everybody else's good comments.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. All right, so we're left with Mavita, but I don't know if we're gonna be able to do it with these technical.
Please pray for me. I'm zoomed out. I couldn't connect on the computer, so I was using my phone, but everybody keeps texting me and I'm like, stop! So I'm having craziness. But Mavita Burris, I have been a part of Global Troy since about 2015, I believe it was, when I worked in Troy for Walsh College. And, you know, everything has been really honestly said about what the things, the things we were looking to do and why we actually joined and, and applied to be part of this committee. One of the things that stood out for me this year as we were putting together this, these town halls and these videos and, and really working on connecting with communities is that our commu-, city community resource guy does not always identify. I've specifically asked for businesses of color, businesses that are black owned. And I even reached out to the chamber and I personally can identify them because I support them, but the city doesn't do that. I was told, no, we don't do that. But we know, I mean, you go into a business, you know, whether it's black owned, whether it's Asian owned, you know. So why can't we do something of that nature when we're trying to support communities or various communities? And I'm not saying that we just only support black or, you know, but as part of this mission, we didn't have that. So I had to do that on my own. And I think that's important when we're attracting businesses and we're doing our economic development because as a black woman, if I don't see other people who look like me, why would I go to Troy, a beautiful community, if there's no other businesses or coalitions that support me as an African American black woman, right? So that was something that stood out to me. I agree with the DEI plan. Rebecca and I are the champions of that major task, and we definitely want to see something like that. And again, I just wanna thank you all for being open and welcome to meeting with us because this is invaluable to us and it is a bridge for communication. I hope that this would either be quarterly or something more often so that it isn't just a push, but we are, we are sharing ideas and we are working together to help bridge the gap between these communities. But I just appreciate you guys and, and thank you for allowing me to serve in this manner.
Thank you, Mavita. Well, well, well said. Well, I'm glad you're right, your technical stuff got worked out. So we, we actually got through everybody. I'm impressed. So listen, you know, those, those were the first two bullet points on that last slide. The last, the third thing kinda talked about, you know, where do we go from here? I think Mark, Bob, Sarah, you kind of heard where we go from here on a few different things. Lori too. You know, I think you heard from council that this council is, is looking for Global Troy to continue to do its thing and bring things to council. Let us know what you think we need to hear. And I think you hear in that same thing from Global Troy, that's great. How do we actually get that information to you? How do we, how do we provide that information? What's the best way to do it? Obviously, we have Sarah, who's the liaison with, with Global Troy and she's a liaison for us as well, because that's one way of doing it. I think maybe we do need something a little more formalized potentially, whether that's, you know, whether Global Troy can work is throughout their, and here's the other aspect, just as a reminder, city council, Global Troy meets once a month. That's what we have scheduled meetings. The meetings go fast and as we all on council, everyone's, it's very busy. It's not like, you know, everyone has hours to put aside to be working on regular reports or presentations. And, and so I wouldn't wanna put that assumption that we would, could burn in Global Troy with something like that. But that doesn't mean I don't think that Global Troy couldn't put together kind of a, you know, so the, the communication goes twofold, I think. One is for more immediate issues, whether it's an issue of, you know, look, and I think there's a discrimination happening here, there's something that needs to be addressed. Obviously, I think, you know, you can always, anyone, you can always email all of us at your city council, is it citycouncilemail@troymi.gov or is it just citycouncil@troymi.gov? Somebody know off the top of their head? We'll find that out and we'll make sure Sarah knows for everybody. But that, that's one way to get something quick to us, certainly to city manager's office, but that's citymanager@troymi.gov. That'll get to a plenty, a big group of people and it can be quickly dealt with. But those are the more, you know, something comes up like that. I do, I would love to see Global Troy maybe provide a quarterly report to council on the council packet, kinda talks about, you know, just, and nothing too long, and we know how difficult reports can be to write, but maybe just some bullet point type things. This is what we focused on, this is what we've seen, we'd like to work in this direction, you know, but we need your feedback on this, for example. And Global Troy, what that would do, that report would then get to council on an agenda packet. Council has the opportunity to see it, it's a public document, and it gives council the opportunity to talk about it at a, at a meeting, provide some guidance. And that's one way, I think, that we could do something like that. Everyone has pretty much talked about the value of, or the, the value of getting to the different communities within our overall community for input and engagement. And Bob's talked about the struggle and where we're going with that, we're working with GovHR to work on some planning. We've been talking about it on council for years at this point. But I, I do think that Global Troy could play a larger role in that just because of the relationships they already have in their own communities, whether that's a religious or just a different kind of cultural community. And we should absolutely lean on those relationships and the board, individual committee members to, to achieve that. So I'd like to see something like that. The webpage aspect, that I think Carolina brought it up, I know we've talked about it a little bit in a Global Troy meeting. You know, a lot of other, most of our other boards and committees, I don't think it would necessarily be appropriate for them to have a more or a less, less static page, right? Global Troy is a little bit more promoting a certain message or working on things, whereas Planning Commission, for example, it's gotta be very informational, right? There, there's nothing that, they're very different things. So I, I would like to support the, the concept of the Global Troy webpage on the city site, having a little bit more information or at least having, maybe working with the liaison and city management to get proper approval, of course, but to have that be used as a little bit more as a resource, because I think that would give a natural place to go maybe on our city webpage, which is all in English, I believe, and can be very daunting, frankly. There's a lot of information on there, but it'd be nice to be able to point in some directions, a, a specific place. I think that would be a great place to go. I love Councilmember Hamilton talking about the master plan. Obviously, that's a piece of community engagement aspect, but it's definitely something that's been, played a big role in the city as a whole over the last couple of years, as we've talked about development issues. And when I hear time and time again about, you know, people from other cultures and other countries who, you know, either are afraid of their government, wouldn't dare talk to their government, that's just not what's done in the countries that they originally came from, you know, we have to work extra hard in this city to show that, you know, we, we in fact want the opposite. And to engage somebody with, you know, the master plan updates and I think that's an important thing to keep in mind. And I'm sure that Carlisle Wartman would, is also has something related to this as part of their overall community engagement plan for the master plan process. But if they don't, I wanna make sure that they are reminded, I mean, Global Troy, again, can touch into different parts of our community that don't normally get the information. So I think that would be a key thing as well. And I, Global Troy is an advisory committee. I think that so far, what Global Troy has taken on itself with the educational videos and that component and the, the celebrating of the diversity is a great thing that Global Troy needs to keep up. We just, we could use some of the advisory stuff as well. I think we got a good taste of that tonight by hearing on some specific issues, also some general things. Trying to kind of encapsulate it all here right now, and it's sometimes easier said than done. But I, I think that this, this opportunity for city council members and for the Global Troy members to have the, to hear directly from each and every one of us tonight will go a long way towards taking us to that next level, whatever that exactly is. And I think that everyone here tonight is actually giving very, very thoughtful and very heartfelt comments that are gonna be extremely beneficial for both boards and committees. So I'm gonna toss it back over to city management for a second. I don't know if you need something more specific from us tonight. There was a lot said. I know I've seen Sarah's minutes from our Global Troy meeting, so I'm positive she's got like a binder full of notes from tonight, and we know she does. I don't know Mark, Bob, or Sarah, if you need, even Ellen was taking notes, so that's good. I, that was impressive. But I was too, but you know, if there's anything specific else you need, Mark or Bob or Sarah, now's your chance because we're two hours and 20 minutes in and it's probably time to, to wrap things up.
Okay. Mark shaking his head, no, and he, and he's also sent the message saying, you know, essentially that we're, I think we're good for tonight. And I've seen several people taking studious notes, so I think we're off to a good start. Glad we finally had an opportunity to schedule this meeting. City council has had an aggressive list of, of special meetings over the, the course of the last two years, so I'm glad we could make this one happen.
Thank you, Bob. All right. Okay. Oh, Ellen. Oh, go ahead, you guys, Councilmember Houdrick.
Well, I, I was gonna say, obviously, this was such a great dialogue that GovHR will, is maybe watching this or will look to this. I think this is great input for them as they're gonna bring recommendations back to us. And I would think that that would be a wonderful next step, an obvious one, but I thought I'd just say, say it out loud. And I really look forward to some of the guidance that will come from them as, you know, as we wrap all these ideas together. This was very constructive. Appreciate it.
Good point, Ellen. Thank you. And that's funny, you mentioned, I did have a chance to speak with Dayla from Governor, from GovHR last week. And I told her we were having this meeting tonight, and I told her, I, I don't know if you're gonna watch live, but I did tell her I'd send a link. So I, I will send a link, I'm sure Bob will send a link or two as well. But that's a great point. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, everybody, I appreciate this opportunity and the, the great involvement from everybody tonight. Thank you so much. Continue to stay safe. Please thank our healthcare heroes, first and frontline responders. Everybody's doing a great job and keeping us safe. So we appreciate it and thank you, city management, for, for getting this together for us. And we'll, we'll keep going. Let's let this be a start of a good conversation and process, and this is not a one-off, as we, we know. All right? All right, thanks, everybody. Have a good night. Meeting is adjourned.